I'd like to call to order meeting of the Oak Ridge Board of Education. Would you please join as we honor America and the Wildcat Company Navy Junior ROTC presents our colors? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Webb. Any additions or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next we move to special reports and presentations. First, we'll start off with some good news, just some of the good news that's taking place in the Oak Ridge schools. Ms. Webb, we'll start with you.
Okay, we have Willowbrook. Willowbrook Elementary School hosted its first Principal's Advisory Council on September the 2nd. Third and fourth grade students completed applications and were chosen by the administration. The first meeting was very beneficial and students were able to share what they liked about Willowbrook, what they wanted to see change, and how they could be a leader in their school. The group will meet once a month before school.
Mr. Stevens.
Also with Willowbrook, Willowbrook parent volunteers are helping by signing up for times to volunteer cataloging the classroom libraries. This is a great help to ensure that Willowbrook is compliant with the new law.
Ms. McLean.
Okay, also from Willowbrook, the Willowbrook Secret Garden has undergone a makeover. With help from a newly assembled Secret Garden team and with a generous donation from Don Williams at Tennessee Nature Scapes, the garden is now a place where students and classes can learn about pollination and the life cycle of plants and animals. And that's just some of the good news from Willowbrook.
Ms. Agel.
From Robertsville Middle School, the Lady Rams volleyball team are city champions. On September 7th, the Lady Rams defeated Jefferson Lady Eagles in two matches, 25 to 19 and 25 to 16. The junior varsity team also won their game against Jefferson in three matches. The team is now 6-4 overall, 6-2 in the district, which puts them in a close race for the second place in the district. And that's good news.
Thank you. I'd like to just take a moment to let the Linden family and the Oak Ridge schools family know that this Board of Education has been grieving with you as you've had to face the tragedy of losing one of our outstanding educators in Amy Dixon. We continue to ask for prayers for the Linden staff and Linden students and certainly Amy's family as they continue to work to get through some very difficult times. And the support of the Oak Ridge community, we know, has been there and particularly the support of the other schools throughout our district, and we are very appreciative and thankful for that. Next, we'll move to the public forum. The public forum is for anyone who would like to address a topic that is not on the agenda. You may address a topic that is on the agenda when it is presented. Please raise your hand to be recognized if you choose to address the board. You will have three minutes to speak. The board may or may not respond to your comments or may have the superintendent address your concerns. When you speak, please come to the podium and sign in and then state your name and address for the board. Is there anyone who would like to address the board at this time?
Good evening. My name's Trip Wyatt. I live at 118 Bay Path Drive here in Oak Ridge. I'm a, I'm an attorney and most of my practice is in Knoxville. I hope I'm not worrying any of you all because I only have three minutes and lawyers usually aren't used to time limits, so we tend to drone on. But I'm not here, well, I guess I am here to advance somewhat of a legal argument, but I really am appearing as a concerned parent of a third grader, my daughter Madeline White, who's in third grade at Woodland Elementary. I'm here to address Tennessee Code Annotated 49-6-3115. I'll just refer to it as the Reading Remediation Law, or really, the third grade retention law. This came to my attention first from my mother-in-law, Ruthie Gordon, who is a retired public school teacher from Woodland Elementary, and my wife. And then that attention grew through a parent-teacher conference where it was nothing but concern and anxiety that was palpable in that meeting. A lot of fear from parents, a lot of fear, it sounded like, from teachers and administrators. It was disturbing to me to hear that there was apparently no reach out to Tennessee school boards, educators, administrators. I've had discussions with both State Representative, Mr. Reagan, and Senator Richard Briggs, and was kind of shocked to learn that, among others, Tennessee School Board Association was not consulted with this law. But to break it down, it's very simple. Your performance on the TCAP decides whether you have to attend a term of summer school and also intensive tutoring over the course of the following year. And the most troubling thing about this to me is that, as a parent who moved here intentionally to Oak Ridge so that my child could go to Oak Ridge Schools, so that she could attend Woodland Elementary and onward, it takes away completely the decision-making of administrators and teachers as to the issue of retention of a student. Now, the big problem here is, you know, we've seen in the news, two-thirds of students are below proficiency with regard to the TCAP. But let's pose a hypothetical. A straight-A student has a bad day, has a stomach ache. This is not the bar exam, okay? I've taken the bar exam. It was horrible, okay? By some grace of God, I passed it, okay? But we're not talking about adults. We're not talking about people who've been put through the boot camp of medical school and law school.
One minute.
We're talking about eight and nine-year-olds. And I fear that this law, as an unfunded mandate, is a disaster waiting to happen for students, for teachers, for administrators. How are, in the law itself, needy families can apply for up to 50% to Tennessee for Assistance, it's Tennessee Assistance for Needy Families. What about the other 50%? And if they don't attend, if they don't comply with this law, automatic retention. There are things like testing for summer school, this issue of whether a child has had adequate progress. All these things are undefined. As a lawyer, I can sit here and tell you, this is a bad law. It needs to go. And I will tell you, as a parent standing here today, that we are ready to fight for that, and we will support you all and the teachers and administrators in Oak Ridge.
Well, I can't stop my clock. Thank you, and appreciate that and your comments. And you and I have talked and would continue to encourage you to speak out to whomever you can get to listen, and even if they don't listen, continue speaking out to them. We need not only members of the Board of Education to be contacting those in the legislature, we need parents, community members, et cetera, to be contacting them as well. Our hands get tied with what we can do when a law is passed, but certainly, it's not too late to make revisions to that in the upcoming session that would offer benefit to our students and our staff. I think everything you just said, the board sitting up here, I seem, I don't know what I did with my clock. I guess that means my three minutes are up too. I don't know.
I'm an attorney. You had to make sure. Double alarm.
Yeah. I don't know. Well, if you come to more meetings, you'll understand my ability with technologies. It's just me, that's all I can say. But I agree with the comments that you made and support that, and appreciate you and your wife taking the opportunity to come be with us tonight. And we'll stay in touch. Any other comments from the board? Ms. Agel.
Mr. Wyatt, I appreciate your comments. I agree with you completely. I would like Oak Ridgeers to understand that it was our state representative who tacked this on to the TISA bill. He did not consult us. He did not consult TSBA. He just tacked it on because he wanted to. There's an election in a few weeks, and we need to know about that.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, we move next to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Ms. Agel. Please cast your vote. Consent agenda is approved unanimously. Moving next to items for action. For first, item A, Board Policy 4.210 Credit Recovery, a first and second reading. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of policy 4.210 Credit Recovery.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers.
As the board notices on page two there, we have some language that was struck, and then the new language is, "Students passing credit recovery shall receive a grade of 60% under the state uniform grading system." So we are adding that, which our legislators is demanding that we do as well.
Comments or questions from the board? Oh, sorry. Ms. McLean.
So, can you explain a little bit about what credit recovery is, and also, is it like a pass/fail?
Yes. The change from 70 to 60 is to align with the change in the new high school state grading scale, and it does work somewhat like a pass or fail in that if you have failed a course and you take credit recovery to earn that credit, then the passing score would be a 60 moving forward.
Ms. Agel.
And this is regardless of how well they do in credit recovery. If, if something had gone awry during the school year, parents got divorced, whatever, something went awry with the child during the school year that threw them off, and then over the summer in credit recovery, they knock it out of the park, they still get the lowest D possible.
You are correct.
Ms. McLean said, "What's the motivation for them to work hard?" That's the question. Work as hard as our legislators work, I guess. I don't know. Oh, well. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. I think, before we go on, I think it's worth mentioning this at this time, you know, you do this for a long period of time, you wonder, when was the last time we mentioned that? Was that three years ago, or was that the last time we met? But I want to assure people, within these policies, there are things this board would not be doing if we didn't have to. Our hands are tied, so that's again why it's important to have people who support public education to be in the position to understand what it takes to be successful for our students and our teachers. Item B, Board Policy 4.603 Promotion and Retention, first and second reading. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 4.603 Promotion and Retention.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? I understand, sometimes you just can't get it out. Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Dr. Borchers.
There is a lot of information in this policy. Again, as we talk about having our hands tied, it all goes right back to the law that was passed. As I mentioned to the chairman earlier tonight, I think there's a good chance that, I hope that this policy will be back in front of us again with some other changes as, as we go through and proceed with this action. But if there's any detailed questions, myself or Dr. Williams can try to answer those.
Ms. McLean.
I had a question about the home literacy reports and what that means.
So, the home literacy reports are part of the Tennessee Literacy Success Act, and those are reports that we send home after each quarter screening when a student has been identified as in need of intervention, and it describes for parents what that intervention period consists of and some ways that parents can additionally support at home.
Dr. Williams. I was going to make this a yes or no question, but I don't believe I can. Maybe it is. Have, have we had identified to us everything within this law that is necessary for us to provide adequate notifications, adequate testing, adequate et cetera, et cetera, to those who need that?
At this time, we are still waiting on several templates from the Department of Education to be able to do that.
I knew the answer. I just wanted others to hear it. Thank you. Other comments or questions? Board Policy 4.603, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item C, Board Policy 5.106 Application and Employment, first and second reading. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 5.106 Application and Employment.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borchers.
As the board is aware, the major changes are on the second page of the policy. The biggest change there was striking the word "require" and putting in place of that to be strongly encouraged, establish residency, and it lists the various positions in the district that we would strongly encourage. And then on the top of the third page, obviously, it just clarifies very clearly that the superintendent must live within and reside in the city of Oak Ridge. And the main reasons, you know, the main reason for us, for myself, to bring this forward is, you know, we just want to be able to attract as many high-qualified candidates as possible. And wanting to be able to do that, I think this will allow that to happen. And also, I think since the last time we brought this forward, I think the pandemic has done a lot of changes in everybody's life, and especially in the area of housing and the cost of housing, the amount of housing, and I think people just have some different thoughts and viewpoints now on, on where they live, how they live, and I think that's another reason to consider this policy.
Comments or questions? Mr. Stevens, sorry.
I'm not one to say, "I told you so," but I won't do that, but you've gotten a whole lot closer to my original argument about three years ago.
Hearing no one else? Oh, Wyatt, sorry. Ms. McLean.
I think that, especially a principal, if they were living in a surrounding community, not in Oak Ridge, after they fought the traffic on Solway for, you know, to attend basketball games, chorus, band concerts, and after they realized what a cool community Oak Ridge is, they would want to move here. So I think, I think taking out the required and making it strongly recommended, I think that's good.
Please cast your vote. Motion passes for, for, one, against. Item D, Board Policy 6.4052 Opioid Antagonist, this is a first and second reading. It's hard to read those two words. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 6.4052 Opioid Antagonist.
Comments or ques, comments or questions? Oh, yeah, sorry. I hear a motion. Still trying to say those two words together. Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. McLean. Now, Dr. Borchers.
Now that I had to say it after you did it, it ties me up too, but...
You turned your microphone off just as you were saying. I should have learned to do that.
This is brand-new policy and allows us to put Narcan inside our schools. As it says there, and Mr. Lay has already developed this, we'll have an admin procedure around this, dealing with training, storage, use of, and Mr. Lay shared this morning, this isn't the needle or any of the stabbing, it's actually a nasal treatment, so probably unfortunately something that we need to have now in our schools.
Another positive fact is, if you were to use the Narcan on a person that was not truly OD'ding from a drug overdose, it would have no negative side effects. So, so once again, like Dr. Borchers said, we're, we're going to train individuals to do this. We will notify parents if we have to, and we have multiple forms of documentation that it has happened.
Mr. Stevens.
It's one of those cases where I'd much rather go through the training, have all the preparations, and not need it than to ignore how fentanyl is reaching every little town. It's, it's frightening to say the least, but for anyone that shows symptoms of an overdose, you need to be able to have something to lean on, on knowing what to do. Nothing's worse than feeling helpless when you recognize or suspect a particular problem. So I, I think the training to ensure that our staff at, at each school has adequate understanding of, should they need to do something or, or use Narcap, they have a good idea of what to do and how to do it. Because I'll be happy to argue with anybody after the fact and the child is fine, that to be standing there and lose a life unnecessarily.
Motion is approval of Board Policy 6.4052. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item F, F is item E is FY22 Internal School Funds Audit. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY22 Internal School Funds Audit.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers.
I'm just going to read the brief memo here and then ask Ms. Van Dyke if there's anything else she'd like to add, but... anything else she'd like to add. But as you know, we've received the FY22 Internal School Funds Annual Financial Report for the Oak Ridge Schools from Brown, Jake, and McDaniel. The results of the audit examination for the individual student activity funds for each school continue to reflect an overall commitment by staff to the fiscal management and observance of Board of Education policies and procedures. So another good internal audit. But Ms. Van Dyke, anything else you'd like to add?
Sorry, I have to take my glasses off to read. I was just going to read the part of the audit that everybody wants to hear, which is, "The results of our test disclosed no instances of noncompliance or other matters that are required to be reported under the governmental auditing standards," which means we had no, from the internal school funds, we had no issues. So, no findings this year.
And we appreciate that because it keeps us out of jail.
Me too, yeah.
But I know you have a very dedicated and hard-working staff.
Right.
And we appreciate your leadership. And please, on behalf of the board, let them know how much we appreciate them. Maybe we need to get them to come to a board meeting sometime just to thank them and do that. So we'll work that out.
I can do that, yeah. And this is the bookkeepers as well. This is really the internal school funds, and so this is just, shows how, what a wonderful group of bookkeepers we have in this district as well.
Very good. Comments or questions? Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item F, FY23 Audit Firm Engagement. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY23 Audit Firm and Internal School Funds Engagement Letter.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers.
As the memo states, I recommend the Oak Ridge Schools approve the audit firm of Brown, Jake, and McDaniel for performance of the FY23 annual audits and the attached engagement letter for internal schools' funding for FY23 totals $17,100.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item G, FY23 Safe Schools Grant. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY23 Safe Schools Grant in the amount of $90,540.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers.
As you can see from the memo there, we've got a total of $90,540 to be used to install a security vestibule between the CTE and SCA, install long-range cameras at the new track facility, replace and update DVR servers for district cameras, purchase and install new cameras where needed, and install security film on district windows and replace door hardware where needed. And I just want to thank Mr. Lay and Mr. Thacker for all the work that goes into this.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item H, FY23 Coordinated School Health Grant. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY23 Coordinated School Health Grant.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers.
This grant is for $75,000, is used to cover the cost of the coordinator's salary, benefits, travel, and materials to support the coordinated school health initiatives and activities. And I'll just add that Ms. Marshall Wade does an excellent job for us.
Comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, FY23 Twenty-First Century Remaining Funds Grant. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the Twenty-First Century Grant, supporting after-school programming at Glenwood and Willbrook Elementary.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
For approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Dr. Borchers.
And as the board knows, something we do every year, and we heard all the great things that Joe Bruce accomplished here just a few meetings ago, and this grant is for $159,405.79.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item J, FY23 SIR 3.0 Grant. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY23 SIR 3.0 Grant Budget, which provides funding for instructional and support staff salaries, instructional materials, software, transportation for after-school, and intercession tutoring programs.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borchers.
Dr. Williams, anything else you want to share there?
We haven't made any major changes in plans to the spending of our SIR III from the original plans that you reviewed. This is just carrying out the continuation of the use of those funds.
How far away are we before the continuation of those funds no longer continues?
We spent approximately half last year. So we'll get close to that. There may be a tiny bit left for you to go through this process one more time, but we'll spend the majority of it by the end of this year.
Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item K, FY23 Resilient School Communities Competitive Grant. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY23 Resilient School Communities Competitive Grant Budget, which, if funded by TDOE, will provide support and resources for expanding trauma-informed model schools, school-based initiatives, and staff capacity.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers.
I'm going to ask Dr. Williams if she wants to summarize kind of what we're doing here.
With this grant, we've been told we have the opportunity to gain $10,000 toward our student success initiatives, but we also have the opportunity to go for $250,000. So our very excellent student success coordinator has done a lot of work in putting together different streams of support for things that we already have in place, like trauma-informed schools and some of our character education, but just expanding all of those programs to all of our schools and places where we have small pockets now, really infusing that into all of our programs. So we are hoping to get the full grant amount and should know pretty soon.
Comments or questions? Ms. McLean.
So what is trauma-informed instruction?
Let's see, we have a team that already has done a little bit of training in that area. Ms. Lauren Dean, would you mind sharing something from your group? I put her on the spot, I'm sorry.
No, you're good. So the trauma-informed school team, I can't come up there.
We don't want those millions not to hear what you're saying.
I know, I'm super loud. So the trauma-informed school, we received that, it's a grant, but there's no funding for it or anything like that. I want to say, two years ago, we got that, and they just talk about different ways you can support kids in the classroom. So one of the things, we have a group of kiddos who come around, and they did a calm corner project. So we use some funds from Ms. Painter and from Dr. Williams, and so all of our classrooms have a calming corner in there. And we teach the teachers how to utilize those for kids who do suffer from anxiety and trauma and things like that. So I know that there, it's Allison Rutherford from the state of Tennessee. We do have a call every month that Mrs. Bruce works to get on and just see what you can do to best support teachers, to make sure they know how to deal with kids who are suffering from trauma and, you know, and bringing that trauma into the classrooms. Does that answer your question? Okay. Thank you.
Any others? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, next item is FY23 Innovative Schools Model Grant. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY23 Innovative Schools Model Grant Budget, which will provide funding support to create seamless pathways for students from middle to high school and beyond in the career clusters offered in the Oak Ridge schools.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers.
I know the board can see a lot of the grant information there on this item. Just want to thank Dr. Cross and all of her team to help put this together in a very short timeline, actually. But as the board knows, we're getting a million at the high school and $500,000 at each middle school. At the high school, we're going to be revamping our welding labs, doing some pretty amazing things down there for that space, and in addition to some aviation things at the high school and at both middle schools. So we had a team of middle school administrators and teachers and high school staff that just came back from Colorado to look at some aviation things that they're doing out there. So we're looking to align those things from the middle school that will lead up right to the high school. So more, as it says there, more seamless integration of those programs. So looking forward to bolstering our aviation program and revamping our welding shop.
Comments or questions? Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item M, Purchase of District Cameras and Servers. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the purchase of cameras, licenses, and DVR servers from systems integrations for replacement of equipment beyond useful life and improving security views around district facilities in the amount of $69,022.24.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers.
And much of what I read is in the memo that you received, but this camera purchase will improve the external security, specifically at Oak Ridge High School. The new servers will complement this purchase, providing additional recording time, replacing older DVR servers that are near or beyond their planned life, and maintaining the software capability of the system. So again, this leads back to the safety grant we passed earlier today.
Comments or questions? Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item N, Increase in Admission Prices for Middle School Athletics. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of an increase in admission prices for middle school athletics for football and basketball to $5.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Dr. Borchers.
And you can see Mr. Lay has laid out in that memo the reasonings behind this recommendation. As Mr. Lay and I talked this morning, we really have one of the lowest ticket prices for basketball and football in our region. And this is like many things, you know, the cost of EMTs, the cost of referees, everything continues to go up, and this has not changed for quite some time. So making that recommendation so that we can maintain the programs that we have.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. $5 is still a bargain. Can't hardly buy popcorn at the movie. You can't. Am I saying hardly? You can't. It's a bargain. Oh, well. Next item, Oak Ridge High School SEEK Club, Sophomores Encourage Every Kid Club. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the addition of the ORHS SEEK Club.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Dr. Borchers.
And as you can see there, we've got some sophomores that want to give back and help our freshmen get through that freshman year and give them advice and mentorship. So just, just great that we've got students and then staff that want to help create a club like this for our freshmen.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. You know, Dr. Borchers, on this topic, over maybe the last couple of years, we've approved, if I'm not mistaken, it could be, several clubs that have kind of dealt with issues like this, working with other kids, mentoring and so forth. I think it'd be good for the board, we approve them, and then we don't know what happens. I think it would be good if we could work it out at some point in time to have a representative of the club to come to the board and say, "You approved us, and here's what we're doing, and here's where our successes are." So, you know, if we can take note of that and make that happen on down the road, I think that'd be great. Okay. Item P, 2023 Fourth Grade Safety Patrol Trip to Washington, DC. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the fourth grade safety patrol trip to Washington, DC from June 9th to the 12th.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers.
We recommend that the board accept the bid from Gerber Tours. And for the above-mentioned bid, their bid was $85,000, and it ranked 97% on the ranking sheet and met all specifications. Bids range from $85,000 to $90,000. And I'll ask, Mr. Lay, anything else you'd like to add on this trip?
Just wanted to share, this is the second and final year of our reimbursement for the lodging that we did not spend during the COVID year when the trip was canceled. So, so once again, Gerber has been honorable and kept their end of the deal, and we appreciate that and has kept our price down.
Very good. May have missed this. Have we always had a ranking team to go through that process? Or is this new? Have I just overlooked that before?
We've always had a bid process, but the ranking with the form, has that always been, that's always been part of it?
Mr. Ward did have a group that would kind of look at it. I don't know that they've ever done the official rankings before, but they did start that this year. As it got passed on, he kind of handed the baton. And so, yeah, there was a team of three, I believe, that were trying to evaluate, to make sure that we're evaluating each.
That's good. I think that's a good process.
Absolutely.
Any other comments or questions? Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Items for information, enrollment and attendance reports. Mr. Lay.
Yes, sir. From the information provided, you will note that basically, we are now at 4,919 students district-wide. This at the end of the first reporting period, which is our first 20 days, and that is 108-student increase, basically in comparison to our last reporting period this past school year. If you look at this time last year, that would be a 121-student increase. So, so I feel very... So, so I feel very comfortable and confident. We basically have increased by 100 students in the past year, and we'll continue to monitor that and see what this year looks like.
While we have you here, we had our first truancy meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And District Attorney did attend or did not?
He did not attend.
But we had a few there that still are having some difficulties finding their way to school.
Yes, sir. We invited five families, and we had three that actually attended the meeting, and we normally run somewhere between a 60, 70% attendance rate for those meetings. I will say this time, everyone was on time, and I think it's always great to be on time to a truancy meeting. So, you know, and we had, on a serious note, we, we had a good group of parents. They were all concerned and, and once again, experiencing some challenges that I, as a parent, never challenged, although perhaps I was just fortunate. But, but we're taking the team approach, and once again, with just one goal in mind, that is to improve student attendance.
Absolutely. Thank you. Other, any other comments or questions? Finance report, any comments or questions there? Okay, moving on to items for discussion. Alan, I don't want to put you on the spot, but you know I do anyway. How about a track update? That's kind of old business, since we're working on that.
Well, that's exciting news. They actually started today working on putting the final surfacing material on the track. That's a 17-day process. And then they'll come back a few weeks after that is completed and put the striping on the track. Fencing that we'd started replacing, most of that's done. We've got, power is scheduled to be finished up in the next two weeks, so we'll be able to light the track. And we got fiber optic pulled out to the track area now so that we can light up the new cameras and power up the services on that site. So, getting close.
And the scoreboard?
Uh, scoreboard is scheduled for February. Takes that long to get the materials, equipment, and build. But we do have the steel uprights are in. We put those in early so that we wouldn't damage the track in the process of installing that.
Questions from anybody? Ms. McLean?
So the red surface is going to, or the cardinal surface is going down now? Or we still waiting for, toward the end of 17 days?
No, that is happening now. So it, it goes on in several, several applications, and then the final painted surface, the, kind of the cardinal look to it, will be the last finished piece to that, and then they'll come in with the striping. I've worked with the coaches, so we have significant striping laid out for the, for the track, and they're, they're very excited.
Thank you.
And should be. Thank you, Alan.
Sure.
Couple of other items to mention. Probably one that I think most everybody's somewhat excited about. Fall break will be starting next week along with intercession in some areas. Good opportunity for some of our students to do some recovering and some other things. So I know, look forward to that. The Board, besides meeting tonight, tomorrow, we'll be traveling to Jefferson County for our fall district meeting. And then on Wednesday at 8:30, we'll be visiting Linden. And then we will return here again for our Board meeting in October on the 24th. Dr. Borchers, anything else you might have?
No, I don't think so. But like you said, we, we've had a very successful first quarter, and, and I know our teams have been working extremely hard, and, and the fall break will be a nice break for them, and then recharge those batteries coming back for the second quarter.
Would, I know you've been reminded, but let's remind the Board again, Travis is gonna pick up your laptop, so don't walk, go away with it. He'll take it, and we'll get it back. And make sure you leave him information so he can get into it. That would be very helpful. And Travis, you're back there by yourself. Thank you, tonight. And Lynn, thank you as always for keeping us on task. Thank everybody for your attendance tonight. Stay safe, and we'll see you next time. We're adjourned.